Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'll do that tonight, Madam Chair. Commissioner Campos, Joe Campos.
Present.
Commissioner Mendez.
Present.
Commissioner Laramine.
Present.
Commissioner Abel Campos. Commissioner Myram.
Present.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Handler.
Present.
Commissioner Cochrane.
Present.
And Chair Bowers.
Present. Okay, I am assuming...
That's it, we have a quorum, thank you.
We have a quorum, thank you very much. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruption during our meeting. The audience, not your microphones, I think it's your cell phones, that's what you have to mute, right? Yeah, I don't know why it says "microphones." Anyway, for those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the Commission, please raise your hand so that we know you would like to address the Commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Oh, that's for people who are online, that's what it means by "microphone," not those of you out there. Before we start tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that no one declared. Second, is anyone in the audience this evening, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there are no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the October 21st, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Handler, I approve, I have moved to approve minutes.
Second.
It has been approved, moved by Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Cochrane. All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have a, we have at least one item that has previously come before the Planning Commission and it is here before us on the agenda tonight for us to obtain any further clarification from City staff, for us to discuss these items amongst ourselves, and to come to a conclusion for our recommendation to City Council. The first item is a memo on the utility extension, you, urban growth area.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you're right, this has been before the Planning Commission last month. At that time, it was expected that by now we would have an ordinance for your review. We do not have that, but it is a very meaty topic and the Commission's had a month to review the memorandum. It basically summarizes the importance of planned and smart utility extension policies in the Pasco urban area. It identifies basically three different scenarios for your consideration. The first is either the unincorporated or formerly unincorporated areas noted as a river view area, the lands within the 2008 urban growth area expansion, and then the lands added that are part of the current urban growth area expansion. Staff suggests that the Commission consider three different policies for recommendation for each area. Each area has unique attributes and doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't go well to have a blanket fits-all policy for them. However, again, staff is interested in Commission's further review of this. No action is expected this evening, simply to gather Commission's perspective and listen to any discussion that occurs.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. White. Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions? I had one. Is it possible to see mapped the unincorporated plus the 2008 and the current EGA? That would be a great addition. Anything else, Commissioners?
So I think the same, kind of similar comments to last month is, you know, balancing that. I think you came up with some good flexibility here for treating different areas differently, but I think the, the main driver from my perspective was just making sure that we incent and prioritize developers leveraging the infrastructure that the taxpayers invested in and when they don't want to do that, that it's almost incumbent on them to make those connections and leverage what the taxpayers have invested in versus make the taxpayers take on extra infrastructure costs.
Thank you for that suggestion, Commissioner Cochrane. Any other thoughts?
Pardon me, Madam Chair, I forgot to mention that this was referred to the Home Builders' Association some time ago. I'll check up with them, I would have thought that they might want to weigh in one way or another. But my guess is that in December, we'll have a more formal public hearing and probably an ordinance. I'm relying on our legal team for the ordinance, there's quite a bit to take on with that, so I, I don't, it's hard to guarantee work that you're not responsible for.
Okay, thank you. So we have that to look forward to at our December meeting. Terrific. So the next item is a public hearing and this is regarding corner lot fencing. Mr. Hattori.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I am here to discuss a proposal for a code amendment regarding corner lot fencing. I will start off by going over the current standards again. So currently, this is our code PMC 25180501C. The height of fences, walls, and hedges shall be limited to three and a half feet within the front yard area of residentially zoned lots, retail business, and office zoned lots provided when two contiguous corner lots or two corner lots separated only by an alley right-of-way form the entire frontage between parallel or nearly parallel streets. The height of fences, walls, and hedges shall be limited to six feet within the front yard adjacent to the side street, except where the front door of a house faces the side street. All fences greater than three and a half feet in height must be set back to the building line of the house facing the side street. So to give you an idea of what this looks like, in this example, both of these houses don't face the shared street and in this scenario, six-foot fencing can be extended out into the green, pink, and orange areas. The front yard is indicated by blue, the maximum height of fences there is three and a half feet. Real-life example of this can be seen on this slide, you can see that the fence extends out to the sidewalk where the property line is presumed to be. The other scenario is when one of the houses does access the shared street. By current code right now, the requirement for six-foot fencing would have to be set back to the building line of the neighbor's property. So in this example, the dwelling on the left side, their six-foot fence could extend out to the limits of the pink hashed area within the, the green flanking front yard. It would not be able to extend out to the property line. Real-life example can be seen in this next slide. The red circled area shows how that fence on the corner there does not extend beyond the building line of the neighboring property. And with this, there are some issues, logically speaking, with the way the code is currently written. Fencing is entirely based on, on your neighbor's dwelling when there is a property accessing a shared street or it does not meet the requirements that they form the entire frontage between two parallel or nearly parallel streets. So after analyzing the code and possible options, there are two code amendments we would like to propose. And if we go next. The first would be a modification to the residential design standards. It would be the addition of verbiage during the plating stage or the permitting stage for dwellings. If the condition where two contiguous lots form the entire frontage between two parallel or nearly parallel streets, the house would have to be addressed and accessed off of the non-shared street. And in the report for this, there is a modification I'd like to change to that as well. Right now, the code is written, or the proposal is written that the access from the shared street, that would be primary access. Our code does allow for secondary accesses on corner lots. There's a lot stricter requirements that go along with that, but it would create a conflict in code as initially proposed. The second condition would be that fences greater than three and a half feet in height must be set back a distance equal to the front yard setback of the zoning district and this would be a change to the fences, walls, and hedges design standards. And this would take away that dependency on your neighbor's dwelling. This does also take into consideration when two developments or two phases occur bordering each other. This would mitigate that condition like we saw in the, in the previous presentations where that fence extends all the way out to the property line with the driveway next to it. With these provisions, that situation wouldn't be able to occur again. And this is the real-life version of that plot we were just looking at. If you notice, the southern dwelling accesses the shared street and the northern dwelling is slightly behind, I believe, the building line of the southern lot. And because of that, the fence has to be set back two or three feet from the building line of the, the southern property and that puts the fence in like the dining room window and it doesn't logically make sense. And if the fence was allowed to extend all the way out to the property line, for example, then that driveway on the southern property would border a fence creating a visibility hazard. And with that, I will close my presentation.
So, just a question on what you just said with the setback being by the dining room window, are we saying that was problematic?
Yes, it would be if the fence for the northern lot, if it had to be set back to the building line of the southern dwelling, then that fence line would put it at the dining room window of the northern dwelling. With the setback requirement, it would ensure that the, the furthest that setback is going to be is at the building line of the dwelling. So logically, it just makes more sense and it takes away that dependency on the neighbor's property because if they're, they decide they want to set their house back just a little extra, then that puts a burden on the, on the other property fencing-wise.
The building line of which property, the northern property?
So the, the building line of the southern property dictates where the fence will be on the northern property.
Got you. Yes, okay. Thank you for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for City staff?
So when you say you want to add a, you want to add a phrase of primary access so that in the, in the first change, so that essentially like, think about it as like if your driveway was primary access, but they could still have like a motor home entry or slot or parking space that's a secondary kind of access, that's kind of the scenario you would envision for the secondary access not being subject to it, but the primary access is?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and then the second part is, so I assume when you say that it is not allowed to be addressed or accessed, that would assume that, I guess, the scenario where a new division phase is being added and a house is being built and you could tell the builder, hey, this one has to be addressed this way because of this scenario, but it, it wouldn't obviously apply to, you know, it wouldn't be retroactive, hey, you've got to move, you're not telling citizens to move their driveways or anything like that, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Gotcha.
Dwellings that exist now, the hope is that the modification to the design standards will address that.
Awesome, thank you. That's all the questions I had. And by the way, I think it's, you guys have done a great job of going back and forth on a really balanced and minimalist approach that addresses the safety issues, but also doesn't be, it's not too imposing on, you know, citizens' ability to use their property. But thanks.
I have one more question. So the picture that you showed us was not the picture on the western corner here, or the eastern corner?
The previous?
Yeah.
Image? If we can go back one slide. This is actually the...
One more.
Oh, this one.
This, no, no, one more, one more.
It was one with the two arrows.
Yeah, this. That's not that, or is that?
That is not that. In this example, the two properties shown, neither of them access that shared street?
It would be nice to have a photo of the one that we are talking about, just to see it a little bit better.
Okay.
Because I, I have trouble just with the overhead visualizing what we're talking about, so that would be really helpful. I'm even seeing heads nodding from the audience, so, great. All right, so Commissioners, since we have no comments, I'm going to open up the public hearing, so any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item now is the time to come forward and speak. All you have to do is state your name and city of address for the record. Sure.
Good evening. Ooh, a little loud, sorry. I'm, this is Ruben Sandoval, Maria Sandoval. The address is 5602 West Ruby. And we do have some pictures, so I don't know if this is working and we can project.
Is it? John?
John will have to give us a hand.
Hold on, just hold on, Ms. Sandoval, we have John to find for, we can... Help us.
Thank you.
Looks like it's warming up.
So we had the opportunity to attend the meeting that occurred back in August, the 19th, and I too had that visual of this picture that's up here. And thinking about our new development and, you know, where we built our home, we are on a corner lot. We are not facing this situation, like this is not at all what is intended that we would be doing. And so I brought pictures to show. Now there is a three and a half foot fence up, so I wanted to show that to you also. In the last meeting, I know I heard a lot of, you know, maintain the physical appearance and so we took pictures of the different views of our, of our lot out there or our home because it's no longer just a lot, so that you can get that visual about how it's really not maintaining that physical appearance. But I want to start out with, keep this in mind, this is not what we wanted to do at all. One of the things is safety that we're concerned about. And so right here, you can't see it at all and probably the glossiness is not helping, but it's the picture of, and I'll show you up here. It's a picture of me standing like right where the fence would start and this is dark, right? Because out there, we know that it's more like a county area in that area, so there's not as much street lighting and stuff, so it's pretty pitch black. Standing at that same spot, I don't know how to make this clear, I know there's a way. Someone could help me.
And we couldn't see that last photo either.
Yeah, so we'll, we could, it's really blurry.
Ooh.
Wow. There we go. Okay, so I go back to my dark one. Okay, so this is the same picture facing exactly the same way just at night, okay? So here's, here's the little window to the house. So this is now what the three and a half foot fence looks like on that 56th street. This right here is where the uniformity of the, what it looks like turns into. So here we have our six-foot fence, then we drop down and then all of 56 is that three and a half foot code enforcement. This is the fence that's on Court Street, so like when you're going around to see where you're going to purchase your home, it's a six-foot fence that is right on Court Street. And so what my husband and I did is we stood to where we were proposing our six-foot fence to be and it aligned, so this is that stop sign's a little bit further up. So our fence, if it were to, you go straight down and you have alignment, would be right in alignment to where this six-foot fence starts off of Court Street. And so I had this other picture here where you can see, like that's the house that faces this way, right? Our back, back side neighbors. The picture that I saved from the last meeting that is right there side by side says, you know, it goes all the way to the sidewalk. And my understanding from sitting there at that meeting was therefore, because this isn't safe, it would obstruct view, we had to come up with the code to enforce that. But in our situation here and then our neighbors that are going to be up next, we're nowhere near, there's no sidewalk there. And so when I came and discussed this, you know, with the planners at first trying to understand what was being said, they said, you know, well then we, and they used a better word, I mean, they used the word that I know, like a pretend sidewalk. Well, yes, there's not really a sidewalk there, we don't know if there ever will be one, but you still have to leave that much space. And so we're 20 feet into where the actual, our actual fence starts. So I don't have tiny kids anymore, but I do have, you know, two teenagers. I still worry about the safety of our family. Going out there, I see the six-foot fence all around our home and then you look at that and it is the busiest side of the street. When I originally sent the email to the different council members, you know, just stating the concern, I had attached this picture where there is skid marks because there is constant, you know, racing or something going up and down that street. And so, you know, we would consider that feeling more fenced in with something that's more normal of a fence would protect our home. And so it's a beautiful home, you know, it's not a tiny investment by any means. We're hoping it to be our home for a long time. It's just, you know, just taking your own words from the last meeting, maintaining that physical appearance, it's not, it does not feel safe and it by no means is intended to break a code in that manner. So, you know, we plead a, you know, just take into consideration, I always wondered about, is somebody actually going to come physically see this, you know, what we're talking about? So appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. It's been, it's been a while and, you know, we've put up what we've been allowed to put up, but we're hoping that with the visuals, you know, there could be, there could be a reconsideration. Anything else?
Ms. Sandoval, could you stay up there because we might have some questions for you?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cochrane?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, so is the, is the, what you're asking for that you would like to be able to build it to six feet out to the road like that, is that what the real ask is? Or, or is the ask that you'd like to be able to move the three feet out to the road edge? Because there's either like, do you want to go higher, which that looks like a three and a half?
Yes.
Or do you want to go higher, or is it that you're asking to go out?
No.
Or both? Like, I'm just kind of curious what the ask is or what the, what you're...
So we're, so like looking at our land, right, and knowing that we purchased a half acre, a little bit more than half acre and therefore being a corner lot, that costs more, right? But knowing that we, we want to save, you know, the safety for everyone and all, like it doesn't matter that we're losing part of property, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever to make that look pretty. We're just asking that we be allowed to make it be uniform, like the, the, the main fence that goes across the six foot and so to allow us to add the extra, whatever we're missing.
So...
In height.
Yeah, so it's really, it's why you want to be not restricted to the three and a half feet in this scenario.
Yes, that is correct.
And then I guess it's hard for us to envision, but I think the main goal of the three and a half feet is to, to, to help with safety issues when others are backing out or accessing the street. So it's hard for me to tell if there is, you know, like if you built to six feet, are there driveways you would block from being able to see? You know, like if you built to six feet, are there driveways you would block from being able to see the street?
We wouldn't. That back neighbor, it, it doesn't, um.
They, they don't really. Mind, um, for us in, um, six feet. Plus, there's a, there's a electrical box right on the corner, their driveway. They'll, they'll ma- they'll, they'll give it, give them, uh, more space for, for, for that to view one day. But, but they.
So this is an issue, I guess, for staff, this is an issue of the second case, which is the fence balls and hedge design standards. And it's. A setback, I mean, I guess today, you're, you're at, they're based on what's in the code today, they're not subject to what's this proposal. Would this proposal, based on what you've seen, help them any, or is it just gonna be the same for them?
It's kind of hard to tell just based on the images, cause it would be based on.
We need to see the bigger picture, yeah.
Yeah, it would be based on the measurement of how far back the neighbor, um, the White House there, how far back they are setback from their property line. Um, but, as far as extending it out to what I would, I would think is the property line there, it would, it would still require that that be three and a half feet.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you show the picture again of the six, the one that has the?
Madam Chair, excuse me for interrupting, I, I wanna make sure. We understand this six foot fence is the fence abutting Court Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the es- the estate fence, okay. Just wanna make sure that's known.
And did you have a picture that was with three and the six next to it?
Yeah, that's the one at our house now. So this is what, um, it would look like, so this is fifty-sixth, right? Here's our home, here's the part, and then it goes three and a half all the way to, um, where the neighbor's houses. And so another thing that we did, um, when we, before we did the submittal and all, we have, um. An architectural committee that is part of that development area. We submitted the plan and nowhere did anyone ever say it was going to have to be a three and a half foot fence. On the busiest side of where our house is, is set.
Where's your driveway?
Up here. This way, yeah.
So actually, if you were to build a six. Sorry, if you were to build it to six feet, it actually, based on what you described, would create safety issues for you.
No, we, this is, this is, um, fifty-sixth.
Uh-huh.
So we turn Ruby, our driveway's up here.
Oh, so you're not, you're not from fifty-sixth, gotcha, okay, so it doesn't, yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the Sandovals? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming forward. And, um, any others who wish to speak on this item? We just need your name and city of address.
Uh, David Atkins, uh, fifty-six thirteen West Ruby Street. But I'm actually here for somebody else as well. Um, this is one of our neighbors who couldn't be here tonight, and this is a letter he wrote to the council. And his name was?
Miguel.
Miguel. To whom I concern, first off, thank you for your time to hear us about this issue we have regarding the height of our fence. Facing the streets, is a giant concern to my wife. And letting our little ones age three and eight, oh, three and eight years old, play outside in the comfort. Of our own home due to the absolutely no privacy and potential s- safety. To whoever passes by and randomly stops and parks on Route fifty-six on the side. I'm not allowed to put up a six foot fence. We have over a half acre lot. And with just three and a half foot fencing everywhere is visible by driving by, I've had multiple cars stop. On my property, park and sit there for a few minutes and just wait. Wait there, and also had pictures to support this.
John?
I've had personal items in my backyard that I could replace if they were to get stolen, but I do not feel safe letting my eight-year-old play in the backyard, knowing. That it's easy for somebody to literally step over a three and a half foot fence and could take them at ease. Now, I hope that it would never happen, but this is one of the biggest concerns I have.
Well, hold on, with the picture, John, can you come and pull away a little, cause we can't really see the full pictures? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Atkins. Oh, that's better. Thank you. That's great. Okay.
Take them at ease, now I hope that would never happen, but this is one of my biggest concerns I have. Is anyone gonna walk into my house while my kids play in the backyard while I run upstairs for something or anything in general? I recently put up security cameras, but when somebody with intentions, that camera simply isn't going to stop them. Just recently, the neighborhood got broken into and my house was hit. Also, a few items were taken from one of the vehicles that can easily be replaced, my children cannot be. We have worked very hard for many years to get where we are, to be able to build a home for our children. It breaks my heart that I'm told them that they are not allowed to play in the backyard unless they are a hundred percent supervised. Due to the fact of it's a privacy safety issue. I just hope that you can see our point of view, and please allow us. To be able to have privacy that will give us a peace of mind for the safety of our loved ones, and especially these littles.
Those are great, can we see the photos again from the beginning, cause we weren't able to see the whole thing? So this is looking out from your neighbor's house, or your house?
Their house.
Okay.
And this is their sliding glass door.
Got you. Onto.
Road fifty-six still, the same one that's.
Same one as their.
The Sandoval family.
Got you.
So, your house is this one looking out, or your house is the one across the street?
Neither.
Oh. So where are you wanting to put the fence?
They're wanting to put it right here between where that street is.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that you wanna put a fence here, and it says the question, if you'd rather build it six than three and a half?
Yes.
Same as, same as the last case?
Yes, sir.
And the fence across the street, that you have the picture of, how high up is that? Three and a half?
About three.
Yeah.
But it's their front yard.
Oh, that's their front yard, okay. Got you. Thank you for showing those again, I appreciate it. Did, oh, now you're gonna speak, okay, thank you. Name and city of, address?
Uh, I'm Ashley Atkins, my husband David Atkins, and we're at fifty-nine thirteen West Ruby Street. So we are on the opposite corner.
Okay.
At the last meeting in October, provided an inaccurate discussion, provided the pictures that were shown by Mr. Hattori. I understand that he was describing the code in its current place. However, the dispute is about size, location. And it wasn't comparable to our situation, we have no sidewalks. There are many points to bring up, including safety, uniformity, direction, and general code. There are many reasons why homeowner, homeowner would want a six foot fence, and describing the current code, there are a few safety concerns that were raised. For homeowners not be able to see around garages and six foot area. If you drive down most roads in District Five. There are many farms, irrigated lots, or just larger lots in general. There is a difference between a seven thousand square foot lot versus a twenty thousand square foot lot versus a, an acre lot, forty-three thousand five sixty. Secondly, there is a point to safety concerns where pedestrians rock, walking along a sidewalk or not be able to see cars. And this might be true in the lot that he described over here. Um. But that is not the same description in our photo. Uh, there needs to be language in the code to interpret these very important aspects when deciding a fencing permit. What about the safety of our family, our pets? Each one of us have met random cars stopping on our side as well, con- consistently. We already had a break-in in our neighborhood, we need a proper fencing to protect our loved ones, and also provide. When we are not home, that someone can just hop over a three and a half foot fence and walk right in. Our goal is to keep our neighborhood uniform. Keep the safe type of fence that is out front on Road sixty. As you can see in the photo. Uh, have you concerned writing more than one fence code depending on size of residential property? Or placing a phrase in the current code to have more versatility for sessions, situations like this that come up? And Mr. Hattori's statement, he mentioned in the code, the. Uh, I'm sorry, the home behind you determines how you, how you put up your fence. It seems ludicrous considering whoever builds first and puts their fence decides the fate of your neighbors around you. Since safety is our number one concern for both this, for both you, the city, and our families, let's take a detour. Uh, this is an area out by the sand dunes in Pasco off Dent Road and Burns Road, a beautiful new, uh, area in the county. I know it's in the county. Um, except, uh, but, all of these fences that are out here are six foot fences on the corner lots. There's no safety concerns that have arisen in this neighborhood, or any of these situations, because these are all larger lots, same as in our community. Keep in mind, these homes also don't have sidewalks, but they also have setbacks, same as ours. Uh, we are in the same city, same size lots, but where these sa- safety issues go. And then these are the great examples that we have for. Six foot corner lots. And you can see from the house over in the back corner over here. It's facing the opposite direction. Which is in the same case of, as us. So they are not, in the county, they don't consider what direction it is facing. Lastly, after speaking with both the City of Richland and the, uh, City of Kinoic Code Enforcement and Building, we took our same property and dropped it in their districts. We would have no problem building a six foot fence on a corner lot. Also, each city does not use the same determination of who builds behind you. We are the only city that does that. Uh, with this being said, that's why we are here today, to feel, that we feel the city of Pasco has overstepped its stringent code. And it needs to reflect, not with the ci- city desires, but what the taxpayers need. That's all we have.
Okay. Can I just ask you to go back to the first, um, pictures that you had? So is that your house?
That's our house.
And so currently you have the three and a half?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have a family of four boys and pets. So, and this is our dream home, uh, as you can see on Ruby, uh, we face Ruby Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we also have all the lines of visibility from the stop sign. Um, but we are not allowed to put the six foot fence per code as it sits.
Got you. Okay. Commissioner, thank you very much, commissioners, do we have any questions for the Atkins? Okay, thank you very much. For your photos and your presentations. Do we have any other? No, I'm seeing heads shaking. Um. Uh, I have a question from Commissioner Cochran.
Not for, I, more for staff is, uh, I know, I mean, these. It's not, I don't think we've seen enough information to be able to judge how the new proposals would affect the. Presentations we've had tonight, cause we just haven't seen the whole lot. Um, but I'm curious about the, um, the comment about other cities, I'm, are, how would our, our standards compare to other cities in fence building? I mean, the, the, the citizen reme- uh, mentioned the, you know, the, the first house wins kinda issues, is that? Are we the only city, or is that pretty typical?
We are the only city of the tri-cities that currently bases, uh, fence setbacks on corner lots on your neighboring properties, which is what we're trying to step away from.
Mm-hmm.
Um, each city does do it differently, though their, their fence requirements, but we would be unique in that aspect.
Thank you.
Okay, so. I know I've been given some new information tonight. Um, do you, does the city feel like, with some of this new information, you would like to revise your proposal? No?
No, but I, I do have maybe an idea, I hate to keep punting, but, um. Why don't we provide, uh, aerial photographs of this particular, now, keep in mind, this is not a, only the fifty-six hundred block of Ruby kind of thing. It's citywide, but why don't we at least provide some aerials and some, uh. Doctored up sketches that, first of all, show the existing situations, and then, um. Possibly show. Um. The, at least the vision triangle, um, effect. It, should there be a six foot fence installed on the flanking side? And then show, uh, it's gonna be hard, but we'll show, try to show, um. What the proposal tonight would accomplish. I, if that's okay, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a little confused on, um, some of the presentation, uh, but, um, that, that might help.
Mm-hmm.
And that can be shared with people here, uh.
Yeah.
When the staff report's complete, so.
I think that would be really, really helpful, um, it's so wonderful when the public comes in to show us some other perspectives. Um, this is how we do community-based decision-making. Um, so I think we need to go back. Put some more perspectives in here, and, um, and then we can look at this at the next public hearing. Anything else you wanna say?
Yeah, I agree, I think if we didn't, I mean, I hate to create work, and I hate to punt as well, but if we didn't do it, and we recommended to the council. Um, there's, the, the same issue be raised for the council, so we need to probably, we need to address it, and. At least get some insight about, is the changes you're proposing, which are seemingly a good balance of all the proposals you, we've talked about. How would that impact or help or hurt these situations, that would be helpful to know, because then, we can, if we do recommend it to the council, we can know, well. Um, we at least know those things and we didn't avoid that, so.
This is, uh, Commissioner Myron. And, uh, just wanted to say, I, I concur with my colleagues, um, up until, uh, this evening, I thought we, we had, uh, some good progress on this issue. But I, I found the, um, uh, the public comments compelling, and, um, I'd be in favor of, uh, additional perspective. Uh, so we can continue to look at this.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron.
This is Commissioner Jay Campos, I hate to also be a broken record, but I kinda echo the same thing as everybody else. Commissioner White said there, he's kinda confused on what was going on, I, I was too, uh, really hard to kinda pick apart what. Everyone's ask was from the public, but what I gathered was, is that more information would do everybody some good. And, um, it, it. If I had to surmise what was going on, it almost sounds like people who have existing fences, who wish to build, are worried that if we propose, they. Can't do anything, or people who have current builds. Are in the progress, pro- process of doing something, I guess, I'd say, uh, there's a lot of confusion, so this would be nice to, like I said, go back and. Get some more information and talk about it again.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay Campos. Any other commissioners want to sound in?
Yeah, hi, uh, Jay Ham, Jay Hamler here, I have a, I have a, I have a comment and a concern. Um. This, this, this is a bit of a subset to what we're talking about in terms of fencing, but I just wanna raise it just for, um. future conversation, conversation about, um, the other day I was driving, I, uh, out to Road Sixty-eight from, uh, from, 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 uh, Sun Willows. And I went up, uh, Burden Road. And frankly, I was disgusted by the aesthetics of the fences that are going up around, uh, uh, along Burden Road. And I just want to raise this as a future conversation about fences. I mean, frankly, I don't care about the height of the fence, as long as it meets safety standards and provides for the aesthetics uh, of, 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 of the city. But when I look at these cheap cedar fences going on forever along Burden Road, I wonder what is going on here? And all I'm suggesting is, I think, as far as fences are concerned, we need to take a closer look at the requirements for fences aesthetically in our urban environment and 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 the creation of our of our neighborhoods, uh, as we go forward. So I understand this is not part and parcel to the conversation tonight, but I wanted to raise this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamler. Um, Commissioner Hamler, you're talking about the fences that are currently on burden.
Yes, I mean, you just just drive up burden and you can see there, it's the cheapest fence you can buy. There's nothing aesthetically nice about them. I mean, we've tried to place a nice landscaping, uh, along burden. I mean, they're they're just not very aesthetically very nice and, uh, not conducive to, uh, I think, the kind of neighborhood that we're looking for.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Commissioner Hamler. All right, so with that, we are going to move on. And, uh, we will continue this at this public hearing at the next meeting. Our next item is other business. And we have amending non-conforming uses.
Uh, good evening, members of the Planning Commission staffs prepared a brief memorandum on a proposal to amend our non-conforming, uh, use regulations in the Pasco Municipal Code. Uh, non-conforming uses refer to, uh, use, uh, non-conformal regulations refer to uses or structures which were constructed at the time when they were permitted but have since become non-compliant due to changes in legislation such as, uh, rezones, land uses, et cetera. So, uh, the city's adopted regulations to create a uniform set of development patterns and use this to align with the adopted goals and policies of the city. However, an unintended impact of that has been, uh, sometimes overly restrictive or sometimes overly costly, um, improvements that deem a, uh, expansion or flexibility for a property owner not feasible. So staff, um, has identified some preliminary refinements to our non-conforming chapter. Uh, there is a few, uh, terms that need to be defined, a few statements that shall probably be updated and, uh, modernized, uh, with an intent to, uh, certainly not, um, deviate from the requirement for safety, health, welfare of the community, but, uh, not prohibit flexibility for property owners. So the brief memo just initiates, um, and certainly we are, um, would like to hear any comments or direction from the Planning Commission. Um, this, this proposal will require significant, uh, communication and collaboration with our building staff to make sure we aren't, uh, in violation of any of those, uh, building or safety codes. Um, however, our intent is to update, uh, the non-conforming chapter to be more flexible for our community members.
Okay, are you looking for comments?
If there is any comments, but this is just, uh, an introduction, um, more so to get any initial direction, um, or approval from the Planning Commission to move forward with this effort. Um, or if there's anything in particular you would like staff to address. Um, and then it'll, over the next few months, we'll come back to the Planning Commission with updates, uh, as we can.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any comments for Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, may I try to say, Commissioner Myron?
Yes, Commissioner Myron.
Yeah, I, uh, reviewed, uh, the non-conforming code section, um, uh, again, uh, just a little while ago. And, um, it it appears that there is quite a bit of flexibility and and maybe staff can, um, provide a little texture to this, but it's my understanding that the non-conforming code section essentially allows a non-conforming use to exist, uh, so long as it's not added to or expanded upon. Um, do you foresee adding additional sections to this? Uh, can you maybe give some examples of added flexibility that isn't currently being addressed?
Yeah, I think one, uh, one example would be multifamily, uh, housing that, uh, today if it's located in a residential zone could be rebuilt. If there was a fire, however, if it's in a commercial zone, it could not. And we actually have quite a few residential units specifically in central Pasco along Tenth Avenue, Sylvester, uh, Court Street, where we have multifamily or residential units that, uh, were constructed at the time lawfully, but however, uh, a new zoning, uh, has been applied. So depending on the extent of the construction or repair, uh, they may not be likely to, at least per our current code, allowed to be repaired or, uh, uh, rebuilt. So we would like to take a look at some of those to make sure we don't have any inconsistency. Now, we do have a, uh, an application cycle for our comprehensive plan land use opening up in the next few weeks. And so we do think that, uh, both refinements, uh, to remove any inconsistency via the non-conforming regulations along with the land use amendments may clear up any of those kinds of, uh, inconsistencies. Um, there's also some, uh, language and terms that are in the, uh, non-conformal regulations, which we actually do not have defined. So they're they're rather subjective. And so we'd rather, uh, we'd like to not, uh, or deviate from, I mean, subjective responses or kind of guesses and just be as as specific or clear as we can when working with members of the community.
Well, thank you for those, uh, those examples. I look forward to the the conversation moving forward, thank you.
Commissioner Jay Campos, I did, great question. Uh, Jacob, great response, also look forward to seeing what you put together.
Great, looks like this will help get the past in line with the present. So we are eager to see that. And we have no other items on our agenda for this evening? Oh, yes, we do, Mr. White.
Well, I just wanted to, as a commission knows, I think, uh, the downtown master plan is is continuing. Um, and we were off to a really good start. We have, we've had a number of, uh, events where the consultant team has been able to interview in-person business owners and and interested parties. We've set up a date, December fifteenth, for a visioning workshop, uh, expected to start probably mid-afternoon and then go until, you know, the the early evening, let's say. It's the night before the December Planning Commission meeting, uh, but, uh, and it will also be held downtown. But, um, just want to let the commission know about that. Uh, there's a, there's actually a number of things going on. Uh, we're right in the midst of the initiation process for our housing capacity plan. Mr. Gonzalez, uh, was successful in getting, uh, the city represented in a housing solution workshop, a national effort, uh, that that we really benefited from in terms of, uh, getting data for our housing capacity plan, uh, that we otherwise would have had to have paid for. A separate consulting team to prepare. Um, I want to make sure that I also mention the Broadmore Master Plan, uh, which is continuing. Now, that's, uh, much like our comprehensive plan, that's not only a master planning effort for that roughly, uh, fifteen-hundred-acre area, uh, but it's also an environmental impact statement. We're trying to balance and unfortunately, there's been a huge interest in that area, probably at the wrong time because it's prior to the plan. But we're doing the best we can to to juggle, juggle that. And there was one more thing, um, that I can't remember. Um, oh, the urban growth area appeal, uh, the Futurewise Appeal of our urban boundaries. Uh, the brief from Futurewise was received, uh, last week, um, or two weeks ago, excuse me. And the city, I say city, it's actually, Futurewise has an issue with the county because the counties adopt the urban areas, but it's our urban area that they're appealing. So it's pretty much our our, uh, issue to take care of. But there's a three-part effort, uh, with the the city's attorney team, the counties, and the Port of Pasco's. Uh, but the briefs in response to Futurewise's complaint are due next Friday. Um, we expect that that will go to the Growth Management Hearing Board, um, I think by the first of the year, and they'll they'll be considering, uh, the, um, the merits and probably have a decision roughly mid-February. It it's not just an an empty schedule because there's some big things that are riding on this decision. Uh, there is the, uh, Reindman Center annexation that will house the Dairy Gold Project. There's, um, a number of, uh, large-scale residential developments occurring in North Pasco. Uh, we're even in the midst of forming sewer, uh, local improvement districts to provide the backbone utility infrastructure in that area. And, um, and of course, with all that, are several annexations that are in some form or another of process. So there's a lot riding on this, uh, we'll, uh, keep you informed.
I had a question too about, isn't there also a workshop happening? I kind of heard a inkling the workshop happened for Broadmore traffic design, is that not you and Public Works or?
Yeah, that, yeah, that happened last night.
Oh, it happened last night, okay.
Uh-huh.
It's already over.
But there'll be another event, uh, and it has to do with the, uh, interchange, uh, mm-hmm, uh, west, eastbound on, uh, one eighty-two and how they go north and south on Broadmore Boulevard. Uh, and and I'm sure the commission knows, there's, there's a lot of commercial interest, uh, regarding that. And, um, it's a very lengthy permitting process. Um, and a a wholesaler retailer that you've probably read about, even though we're not supposed to talk out loud about it, is interested, very much interested in how that all pans out. And with that, also comes a whole host of improvements to Broadmore, the Chapel Hill and Broadmore intersection, the Burns Road and Broadmore intersection, and and of course, um, Sanford Parkway and Broadmore, right where the the site of the proposed retailer is.
So there's a lot going on. Thank you, kudos to Mr. Gonzalez on that. Um, and I imagine you, will we be invited to the, uh, visioning workshop on the fifteenth? Do you want us there?
You are.
We are, that was our invitation.
We 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 don't have the details yet, but we'll 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 prepare those and then there'll be plenty of time. It'll probably be a both an in-person and virtual kind of setup.
Terrific, because that's how we roll. All right.
Last quick comment.
I'm hearing some things out on the on the line, commissioners? Can someone silence? Okay.
Jay Campos?
Okay, I guess Jay Campos hasn't silenced, okay. Anyway, with that, thank you so much, everyone, and, uh, do you have somebody else?
I think Mr. Campos wanted to say something.
Oh, Mr. Campos, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I'd love to. Uh, I'm looking at the traffic, uh, transportation system master plan that Jacob put together. It looks pretty awesome, if the commissioners haven't taken a look at it, it looks pretty sweet. And also, uh, commis, or Mr. White, it looks like the Lewis Street overpass is back up and running?
Yeah, well, it's it's back, some of it's back up, um, yeah. The the the, uh, supports are are being poured. And Mr. Gonzalez probably would want to say a few words about the transportation system master plan, it's a very important effort.
Yeah, just a quick summary, that that items or that effort has been underway since about mid to late twenty nineteen. Our consulting team, uh, DKS, has been working heavily on it. We've added significantly to their scope of work and they've responded quite well to it to, um, identify existing, uh, conditions and also the future demands that will be placed on the city's entire transportation network. So that's, uh, a lot more than just our vehi, uh, vehicle traffic, but also with regards to, uh, non-motorized users. So that's our bicycle, uh, bicyclists, uh, those, uh, on foot and, uh, our emergency service responses. So, uh, if you have the chance, it's a very lengthy document, but it it is formatted, um, I think, uh, in a user-friendly way. So feel free to take a look at it, we are accepting comments, it is on the City of Pasco's website. So if you Google, uh, City of Pasco Transportation Master Plan, it should come up. If not, please feel free to reach out to, uh, our department and we'll get you a link to that. Um, and we'll be taking comments on that for the next few weeks. And then we expect that to come back to, uh, council, uh, in early twenty twenty-two for final adoption.
And will we be seeing it before council or?
Yeah, we we can certainly provide, uh, a summary to the Planning Commission probably in January's Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, everyone, and with that, we are adjourned.